County Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory comments and as usual, make sure your cellphones are off. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed with the Planning Office by Monday, December 5th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, December 20th at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the County Commissioner are held in this same room. This time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes of the October 24th meeting are included on the consent agenda. Any objections to the Planning Commission members on any item on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Okay, item number one is approval of the minutes of the October 24th, 2016 meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 1678 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building. Petitioner is Randy Hofer. Property is at 47-497th Concord Drive, approximately three miles north of Sioux Falls. This would allow 8,172 square foot of total accessory building. Okay, anyone in the audience? Item number three, conditional use permit 1680 to transfer two building eligibilities. This petitioner is Rebecca Eggers. Location is approximately five miles north of Sioux Falls. This would transfer two building eligibilities. Okay, so we're seeing no objections. We move to item number four. Item number four is a conditional use permit 1681 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 1,500. Kyle Lynch is the petitioner. Location is 25-484-485th Avenue, approximately one mile south of Garrettson. This would allow 1,500 square foot of total accessory building. Okay, I see no objections to that. Item number five, conditional use permit 1682 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 6,534. The petitioner is Patrick Brink. His location is 47760-254th Street, approximately five miles southeast of Baltic. This would allow 6,534 square feet of total accessory building. Okay, item number six, conditional use permit 1683 to transfer one billing eligibility. Petitioners Robert Vosberg and Carolyn Vosberg. Location is 47-339-256th Street, approximately five miles north of Sioux Falls. This would transfer one billing eligibility. Okay, item number seven, conditional use permit 1684 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 4,500. Petitioner is Timothy Akinga. Location is at 25-567-485th Avenue, approximately two miles south of Garrettson. And this would allow 4,500 total accessory building. Did I see a hand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item number seven. Okay, we'll circle that. Item number eight, conditional use permit 1685 to allow truck and trailer storage and repair. And this is by Steve Schreiner. Location is 47-174 Haley Street, approximately two miles north of Sioux Falls. That looks like that's the Renner exit industrial park. This would allow truck and trailer storage and repair. Item number nine, conditional use permit 1686 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 4,400. William Kreider is the petitioner. Is located at 25-939-481st Avenue, approximately a half mile north of Brandon. This would allow 4,400 total square feet of accessory building. Okay, item number 10, conditional use permit 1684 to allow a single-family dwelling. The petitioner is Wendy Symmerman. Location is 46-442-249th Street, approximately a half mile south of Colton. This would allow a single-family dwelling. And I'm assuming that has eligibility with it, right? Okay. Item number 11, conditional use permit 1688 to transfer one billing eligibility. The petitioner is Travis Rothstein. Location is 45-967-263rd Street, approximately three miles southwest of Hartford. And this would transfer one billing eligibility. We have item number 12, conditional use permit 1689 to transfer two billing eligibilities. The petitioner is Gary Har. The location is the southwest corner of 481st Avenue and 265th Street intersection. And this would transfer two billing eligibilities. Okay, seeing none. Item 13, conditional use permit 1690 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 2,184. Kenneth Amundsen is the petitioner. Location is 46-597-251st Street, approximately three miles southeast of Colton. This would allow 2,184 square feet of total accessory building. So that is all the consent agendas. We will have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item seven, which will be moved to the regular agenda. So we will need a motion to do that.
That's my motion.
You have a motion, a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and then we'll need approval of the regular agenda including item number seven.
So moved, second.
Moving by the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And speaking of signs, make sure that you bring back your signs that you have a $50 deposit on, because this county does need those and they circulate a lot. So we'd appreciate you bringing those back and get your $50 deposit back at that time. So Kevin Hookman is going to report on item number seven. Oh, excuse me. Anyone else? Your items have been approved and you are free to go. Thanks for coming.
It's conditional use permit number 1684 is to exceed 1,200 square feet and the request is for 4,500 square feet on the property. The property is located approximately two miles south of Garrettson, about a mile and a half if you were going to be real precise, more precise, in a subdivision greater than four lots, which makes it that it's required to have a conditional use permit. The petitioner would like to construct a 50 by 90-foot building, which is 4,500 square feet on the property. Here's the site plan. The property is currently a large acreage, which includes a single-family dwelling. The proposed accessory building would be near the road, kind of towards the entrance of the property. You turn one way toward the dwelling, one way to the accessory building. Note on the site plan that the scale is a little off and he's, will be required to be 50 feet from the road, or from the right away, which is kind of unclear from the site plan.
I was going to ask you that. That looks real close to the road.
The, there are several large accessory buildings in the area. Many of them are on small acreages. The ones that are of similar size, however, this one, this closest size, 5,000 square feet, is a farmstead with several buildings instead of just one. And there's a couple that are about a mile away with other large buildings, which usually, I believe they're all, several large buildings as well, so it's not just one large building. In this case, it'd be one large building. The conditional use permit criteria of the areas to consider as part of the conditional use permit. The effect upon the enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for use is already permitted and the property values in the immediate vicinity. The construction of the proposed accessory building should have little impact on the agricultural and the nearby residential structures. The accessory structure shall not be used for a commercial operation. Number two, the effect upon normal orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for use is predominant in the area. Again, the building can only be used for residential purposes. The future land use will likely continue to be agricultural with the residential developments. So it would likely not affect the future development. Number three, the utilities, access road, drainage, or other necessary facilities are provided. The petitioner will be responsible for attaining and extending utilities as the proposed accessory building needs. It will use the existing driveway according to the site plan. Number five, measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, lighting, inclusive signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. No nuisances shall be permitted at any time during the use of the accessory building. The use of lighting should be directed downward on the property in order to prevent light pollution off the site. Number six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. The proposed accessory building should have little to no effect on health, safety, and general welfare of the public and as well as the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan. Other large accessory building totals are located on farm and non-farm properties in the near area. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit 84 with the following conditions. Number one, the total accessory square footage shall not exceed 4,500 square feet. Number two, a building permit is required prior to construction of accessory building. Number three, an inspection is being made on the proposed addition, to propose accessory building to ensure that it does not exceed 4,500 square feet. Number four, that only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building and no commercial uses or commercial storage will be allowed at any time. Number five, that all outdoor lighting shall be a full cutoff, fully shielded, designed to prevent and direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries. Number six, the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the accessory building at any time after proper notice from the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit, conditions of approval, and the Minnehaw County zoning ordinance. I can just go through the pictures real quick. Right there is the end of the driveway pointing to the south and you can see where he's already storing materials on the end of the driveway where his structure is planned to go. This is looking north. It's a fairly hilly area and many of the residential uses have many trees around it already established. And this is looking south at the end of the driveway. You can see the trailer parked there.
So the building would be right to the right of this, right?
Right here, yep. And again, another picture of the building. You can see the neighbor's building, which is large, about half the size. I think it's 2,100 square feet in the background there. These are some of the large buildings in the area. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Kevin? Now, we'll have the petitioner come forward, please.
My name is Tim Akinga. I live on this resident of 485th Avenue, Garrettson, South Dakota.
Questions, petitioner? I have one.
Yeah.
Do you understand what cutoff downward directional lighting is?
Yeah, a light directionally down to the ground and not protruding out.
Well, they like to screw those metal halide things on the side of the building and they...
No, my brother's an electrician, so he, yeah. This one, we should have put one up when we built the house originally, eight years ago, but we didn't, so...
And then as far as, like I say, the drawing doesn't represent where it's going to be, right? It's going to have to be...
No, it's going to be further. Yeah, we will definitely comply with the rules of the county. So I just drew it on to the map that he had there, kind of showing him direction. We had purchased this land at the beginning of the summer, just because of the elevation of the property of the rest of my land, the eight acres, I would be putting in close to a $30,000 retaining wall just to put a building on the backside of my land, because it drops off. So we, I, when I went to the farmer, I just, I just wanted, you know, like 300 feet. He's like, "Well, let's just square it off." So, which made perfect sense. So now it squares that whole section off between homeowners. So now we don't have farmland protruding between. So on the top there, it's nice and flat and then it kind of protrudes off from there.
Any other questions for the petitioner? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Will you come forward, please? State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Mark Weisner. I live at 25575-485th Avenue, which is the property that is just adjacent to the south of this potential building. You know, I come humbly here and I feel like I'm already fighting a losing battle. I'm a guy that, I bought a small acreage in the country. I enjoyed the quiet, the peace, all those things. And, you know, now I guess when I look at the sheer size of this building, that's, that's what I take offense to. I couldn't even find a building that was this size, the 50 by 90. You know, I received notice on the 21st of November. I finally got home from some business stuff on the 22nd, came down to the county on the 23rd, found out what was going on. And I was at first wondering how, how a building could be built of this size on that existing piece of land that he had. Well, then I found out that he purchased the property next to me, which, you know, from the start, one of the appealing parts of the property was that, you know, we had an acreage and then we had a buffer of land that was agricultural, the farmer used it for an entrance. And then we had the second acreage. So there's kind of a set off there. You know, on the, on the 23rd, I found out that he had purchased that property, so then it kind of made sense that, okay, there's the right elevation for a building and this kind of thing. But when I looked at it and pasted out to build a building that's 50 by 90, it's literally going to take from his existing fence line all the way over to my fence line, so it'll be like right staring at me. I snapped a couple pictures, just so you might have an idea of how it looks. The black and white, sorry, I can't afford color. And you'll see, the first on the slade of A, that's a picture from my front window, from the living room of my property. And you can see, if you look, you'll see, on the right-hand side, there's a, there's a tall tree. Yep, sorry. There's plenty extras here, too. There's a large tree off to this side right here. That would mark the edge of the property. And you can see that there's some existing trees planted there. And then if you go off to the left, the second tree, as you're coming from the right, you can see the existing structure, which is the acreage household. So the building would pretty much start where that middle tree is, right here in the middle. And it would go from there all the way across to here, and it would encompass pretty much that entire front space of the acreage. And as I said, I looked at other buildings in the area. I think there's a couple pictures in here even of, there's a, there's an acreage that's a mile to the east of my place. It's owned by Mark Hudson. His building I see in the packet is 3,200 square feet, and that's with several buildings. He has a large new building, and I know, I saw it in here, if you're interested in seeing it. It's a very large building, and that was 2,600 square feet that he built. And then he has some other structures aside from that. Across the road, there is 4,600 in square foot worth of buildings, but that's several structures. It's like three, four structures. None of them have extremely tall sidewalls. They're in different areas and, you know, various landscaping around those. So the acreage that is to the south, it would be directly south from my place. That's the one that was referred to, that has 5,000 square foot of building. And he's a farmer. He, he does that section. So he's actually doing hay work for a quarter of land, plus he does some other hay work. So it's an actual working farm. And again, it's several small buildings. There's none that are this size. So, you know, I guess, I guess what I come to the commission for is, I'm concerned about just the natural setting. I'm concerned about property values. I'm really concerned about commercial use. I don't know how that's going to be regulated, because I know being in the construction trade, if I was in the construction trade, I'd start using it for storage, for distribution, those kind of things. You know, I'm worried about the added vehicles and safety and noise and all those things. But, you know, just looking at the overall lay of the countryside and where these particular parcels lay, you know, I just feel that that's a very large building and I would think a smaller building would suffice.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else care to address this? If not, we will close the floor for discussion or motion. So what is the setback he has to be from a property line with the building?
Well, he has the 50-foot...
Not from the highway, but from a neighbor.
Three feet for a detached unit.
So staff, can you help as far as answer a question regarding how that's regulated? Keep it from commercial?
Commercial use, yeah.
For the concern of commercial use?
Can I add something?
And I was going to ask you the same.
The reason you see...
Come, you have to come up here so they can...
The reason you see equipment up here on the top, I own a skid steer. I've had it since I built the house. But also, all that equipment you see on the end of the driveway, I'm re-landscaping my entire backyard with natural from Lead, South Dakota, natural stone that came from Lead, South Dakota, because I didn't really like how it was landscaped. So that's a timely process. Have anybody ever landscape before? So that's why I have this stuff sitting at the end of my driveway right now and stuff. I do have two trailers, so that's, one is used, of course, for my business, because I drive, I bring it home every once in a while. The other one's used for my skid loader on there. I do have a facility in Sioux Falls. I'm a tile and granite company, but we only install granite. We don't fabricate. We sub everything to Cyruson Tile. But I'm a tile company as far as installation, not of sales. So we just install tile for residential, not commercial use. So that's why I have that, if you saw in that first picture, that big white trailer, I just pulled it home. I have no use. I have five kids. They all play sports and we live in South Dakota. I just figured I'd put, build a big enough building that they could roller blade in and things like that. And that's why we moved into the country, so we could put up a building for that kind of facility, because we live, I came from South, from Colorado. So it's just, the climate here is kind of tough in the winter. And if you've been from Garrettson, it's really hard to get, we don't have a community center or anything like that, so it's really hard to get to play anything indoors. So that's why I decided to build a building of this stature.
What is your sidewall height that you're planning?
Of the building?
Yes.
15 feet.
That's pretty normal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might, Tim, can I call you, Tim?
Yes.
So, listening to your neighbor's concerns, is there anything that you can think of that you might be able to help make it less objectionable?
Well, I mean, as far as seeing, he's got a row of evergreens as well. As you can tell about my site, I didn't, I'm, I plan on putting a lot more trees in when I purchased this along that whole, because right now, I couldn't do anything with the land, because the farmer just did, just sold it to me. Took almost all summer, so I couldn't really do anything to the land until I had purchased the land. So now that, now that I own the land, I already have meeting with the contractor as far as scoping some of the backside of my land, because I just have some standing berms and things like that that I need to make nice and smooth to berm out, kind of like a rolling hill, kind of like my neighbor to the north has, Shannon Free Walt. So I'm kind of going to do that. And I'm, I plan on planting a lot of trees, so...
How close to the property line do you plan to be with, with...
I would, I would like to be as far away from the property line that I can. I would like to be, like I said, I plan on moving, probably moving out two of those evergreens that are to the northwest of that white structure right there. So I do plan on, and then I plan on planting at least three rows of tree sections between my house and his house. Because my view, actually, my view is to, directly to the west. And we, if you've seen the, the building, it's not, I plan on, I don't plan on just calling up the cheapest contractor to put up my building. I, I mean, I'm going to have stone around the bottom third, just like my house does. I plan on, I don't plan on having it a full steel structure, because I got to stare at the building as well. And I plan on getting some of my equipment that sits outside inside. And I do have a core floor on the house, but if anybody has five kids and it's filled with, you know, Christmas stories and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, any other questions? Yes, Scott?
Commissioner Cosb would ask me about, there is a condition in there that says he's not allowed to operate it for commercial use. So if we were to get complaints, there's also the condition that reserves the right for us to enter the property after notice. So we would, if we got a complaint that, that there was a business operating out of that structure, we would have the right to go and investigate.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you. Commission? Any discussion of your wishes, motions?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
With the conditions.
With the conditions, as stipulated.
I'm wondering if we should put a condition in there about trees, because even though he says that's his plan, I, I understand his neighbor's concerns. The other thing I think about is that building, if it could turn the other direction, there maybe wouldn't be such an impact, just to make sure that it's set back far enough so it's not such an impact on the neighbor.
To turn it a different direction. Is that what she said?
Yes, that's what she was indicating, was to turn it a different direction.
So then my...
Yes, I think we should, just to clarify that.
I'll withdraw my motion for the time being.
Okay.
Well, this is a...
Yes.
To turn my, to turn it this direction on there would actually be more appeasement to him, because the way his house, if you look the way it's hit, then you'd see the whole 90 feet of the, of the building instead of just the 50 feet of the building. So that I think would, and not only that, but to turn it, if you were to look about where my writing starts, that's where the terrace starts to tear down. So then I would have to put up also a retaining wall on that one side if I were to turn it that direction.
Okay, thank you.
So did you say you'd have room for three rows of trees?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Would you object to having that in there as a condition?
I'd like to have that as a condition, three rows of trees.
Okay.
Minimum of three.
Yeah.
Minimum of three.
Mm-hmm. Now, three rows, but how far down? Like the complete property line or is that in the condition?
That's the screen of the building from his house.
Yeah, three rows of trees to screen.
Okay.
His view of the building.
Okay.
That's my motion with three rows of trees.
I'll second.
We have a second for that?
Do they have to be planted before you start to...
No, no, no. They won't. Because you got next spring, you'll probably be building shortly.
Yeah, I was just saying.
But that is something that has to be done by before, next summer. Jeff, could we amend your motion, put a time, say next summer, the trees have to be planted?
Let's say August 1st.
By August 1st, 2017.
Okay.
There you go. That gives them plenty of time. Okay, so we have an amendment, that's okay with the second picking? Okay, so the motion is, we've added one condition, that there'll be three rows of trees to screen the building from the neighbor, which need to be planted before August 1st of 197, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Okay, now we move to item number... What number is that? 13? No, it's 14.
14. Is there no packet on that? I didn't see one.
This is an update.
Gotcha.
Okay. That was one of the thicker packets we've had for a while. Okay, David Heinhold, give us a report.
David, Commission, David Heinhold, County Planning Department. This is an update on conditional lease permit fourteen dash zero five. This is a recall for, we received a complaint about this time last year about the property. Um, this is at the Wall Lake Corner. RNS sanitation is the applicant, Todd Snyder's. Um, the business is located just two doors down from, or one, two buildings down from the intersection there. Property, this is owned commercial. The, the issue was that there's a residentially used property as the ord, zoning ordinance states with screening from commercial property and residentially used property, that there's some form of screening and that's measured from the high side of the property. So it's a minimum of six feet in screening material. Currently, there's no screening. Skip forward. This is a diagram that staff put together. The red line indicates, as you'll see the next couple of images. This is where additional screening is needed. This goes all the way up to the property line of where the, the business is located. The storage area is actually what was approved in prior, in the prior conditional lease permit, if you can recall. It's located right here. But the, the residentially used property extends all the way up around the property. So actually, you can see in the image. So this will show that storage area right here. There's trees on the other side of the, the fence line, as you can recall. Staff has gone out to the prop, sent a couple of letters out in the, in the previous couple of months and just handling this as a, a conditional lease permit review. Um, and the, the applicant has been responsive to the needs. Um, these poles were not there, um, a, a month ago. They were just recently installed about two weeks ago. So in, in the turnaround time that it provided, and during a week, the poles were up when I went back out. And you can kinda see in the background, there's barn back here, or barn right here, and then the house is straight back from the property. So it's a clear view of the storage area. Um, is one of the main concerns that was presented from the neighboring property owner. Um, this goes all the way to that property line where it sits right here, that red line, all the way up there, which is required, as required by the zoning ordinance, to screen from that residentially used property for this commercial property right here. So staff, um, and, and staff finds that the, the work that has been done installing the fence posts, um, and the applicant is here to clarify on the timeliness of the fence panels and future plans. Um, staff recommends deferral until the January twenty-third Planning Commission meeting and finding that the, the fence posts have been installed and, and work is continuing to be met on that conditional lease permit fourteen dash zero five and that condition number four to, to, to have screening around the storage area, have a ninety percent opacity screening around that storage area. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
So do we need a motion for that deferral? Or that's just when it's gonna be presented?
Well, that's just what we're suggesting now.
Yes, okay.
A motion.
Okay, so we'll need a motion for deferral. Okay, thank you, David. And the petitioner's here then. Okay, would you please come up, please, state your name and address?
My name's Todd Snyder's. I'm the owner of RNS Sanitation. I live in Salem, South Dakota.
Okay. So you're coming along then?
Yeah.
Timetable is?
It's just, summer flies by. I have no problem with the fence. I'm glad to put it up. And we stopped where we stopped before initially because we ran into water at the time and haven't got back to it, so. But I had the poles laying there and everything, so we got them in the ground and now I can work on it. As we go, hopefully don't get too cold. But I don't have a problem putting up the fence. I, it'll help me use more of my area for storage anyway that way, so.
Any other questions for the petitioners? You get along with your neighbor there or are they being picky about this?
Well, I don't know.
I think they're being picky about itself. Cause look at, well, look at, you see their house through those trees? Barely, and that's with no vegetation. I know, that's what I mean.
Yeah, in the summertime, you can't see through it.
It was a requirement, so we have to follow through. Maybe we should plant some corn there. But no, you got the poles. By twenty, twenty-third, that would come up.
Well, barring any really bad weather for the next two months, but.
Right, well, I'd say do your best to get it done, cause we don't like to see people come back.
Yeah, I don't like going back either, actually.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, so we need a motion for deferral, the twenty-third is suggested. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, defer to the January twenty-third meeting. Thank you. Okay, do we have new business? Yes, we do.
I might, Mr. Chairman, under old business, I wasn't there for it, but the county commission acted on the gravel pit and sent it back to us.
Oh, for crying out loud. Make a decision.
I was in Florida and, uh, after we approved the forty-five million for the jail, I got off the, the conference call, as did Gene Bender, who had another situation. So there were only three commissioners and Dick Kelly apparently was adamant that it had to go back to us and that in the meantime, the gravel people should be out of business. And Cindy went along with it based on the fact that that was the only bill that was gonna pass. Otherwise, it would uphold our denial. So anyway, it's coming back to us and.
I, I did meet with them. They're gonna make some significant strides to address some of the issues, especially the road. They, they wanna put down a, a, a four inch new asphalt all along that entire road. And some other issues too, like the tarping and hours and they'll, but I'll bring all that back to you and pass some conditions ready for you if you wanna look at them.
Well, that'll be on the twenty-third then?
Yeah. And I'll re-notify the neighbors.
Okay. Just plan on staying late that night. That will be a longer meeting. Okay.
Why don't we just convene at the, at Wiley's?
Okay, what have you got, Kevin?
Everybody's in favor of it now that one on the right person's lying there.
Is this the CAFO thing you've been working on?
All right, so, uh, I've got some subwool first.
Carry you on your bikes. Those boxes are the speakers.
So, uh, staff has been asked to review a few things in the ordinance, primarily the CAFOs and aquaculture. And I've looked into some changes and, and what needs to be done with CAFOs. Um, and this presentation that I have, portion of it, is more to raise the questions to get some feedback because I've been doing lots of research. I have a stack of papers that big and working on, on what other places are doing with CAFOs and what, uh, can be changed in ours to make our ordinance better suited for our needs and the, uh, the future needs. Uh, so in this PowerPoint, I'm gonna cover animal unit calculations and setbacks, setbacks. Because I feel like that is gonna be the primary two items that, for now, that we're gonna look into, that are gonna, where everything else is gonna pivot on those two. Uh, so first of all, animal units. What is an animal unit and what should an animal unit be? Just as a refresher, an animal unit is the way to compare chickens to cows based on the amount of manure or nutrients that it produces. Uh, right here is our graph of what many, uh, county counts as animal unit. So one cow is one animal unit and so on and so forth, based on smaller animals being less than a cow. The purpose of animal units is to determine a regulation category, uh, such as the classes of how, uh, CAFOs are classified. Uh, and that also then determines setbacks, waste management schedules, state regulations and so on. We currently have four classes, A, B, C and D. D does not need a conditional use permit and everything seen above does, except for existing, which I'll get into a little bit. It has been raised that our current animal unit count may be a little outdated. Primarily, one of the, uh, items is being laying hens and boilers. The continuous overflow watering, uh, even if you were to ask Google what is a continuous overflow watering, it doesn't know. Uh, so if it's older than Google, it's probably outdated. Uh, so working on primarily that and maybe a few of the other things. And where do we get some of these ideas of how to improve animal units? Possibly for some outside examples. Uh, right here, and I have this as your first sheet in your packet here, so you can read it. There are three different options of kind of places to look at for animal unit calculations. The South Dakota DENR and EPA are almost identical to our current regulations, except they classify chickens as either liquid or non-liquid manure. And so it has the two classifications. Minnesota has a lot of classifications, as you can see in your list, breaking down different sizes of calves and all that sort of thing. Uh, one thing I'll also point out, that, uh, South Dakota DENR also adds this little sentence in there, other animals considered on case-by-case basis. And I would venture some of these types of animals that can be considered, which we don't have calculations for, and I guess the state doesn't either. Um, but buffalo or bison, there are plenty of bison in the county and I don't, I'm guessing the ones that I've seen are fairly small operations, so they probably don't meet any CAFO regulations, uh, as far as conditional use permits. But that's something to consider. And then fish, that David will look at too.
Beautiful graphic.
And then setbacks, and that's gonna be the second thing that we're gonna kinda look at. Uh, since animal units determine setbacks, and then we need to figure out what is that setback gonna be? Uh, why are setbacks needed? How do, what do they do? Uh, how far should they reach? And how to allow for a CAFO development? Our current, uh, setback ordinance is this. Uh, we have a progressive scale. As you get bigger, your setback increases. Uh, the part that has been raised of concern is the part that I highlighted here, that even once you become the largest CAFO possible, the setback continues to increase for every two hundred and fifty animal units. Uh, that, it, the reason why that's concerning is I, I took a look and if you look at the municipality setback distances in our ordinance, based on that, there is, the, the furthest away you can get from municipality is about four thousand feet, which then calculates to about forty thousand feet, thank you. Uh, which calculates to the largest CAFO, if you get everything else correct, like all the waivers, all the everything else, other setbacks, you can only get seven thousand five hundred animal units. And that's in the extreme case of the county. Um, and so how does that position us for, uh, the future ag in the county? Uh, why do we have setbacks? Uh, primarily to minimize negative externalities. Um, and these are some of the that came up with runoff, noise, road damage and smell is, is what we always hear here in these meetings. They don't want the smell of the CAFO. Uh, so then judging by that, how far should the setbacks be? In like the, the animal units case, we can look at others, for examples. Uh, here's one example. I found this example in Georgia. The CAFO came, or the, the CAFO came after the school, in this case. And the school is, is less than a thousand feet away. And that's not a small chicken farm. The way I calculate it based on the size, it's probably about a class B in our regulations. And then the part came after the CAFO. Uh, so here are some of the examples. Uh, the, the regulations on setbacks are very widely. And I've not seen a regulation yet that have had a further distance than our current regulations for setbacks. Um, for a class A reg.
You've not seen one yet that's more than ours?
I have not.
So ours are the most.
We, we have very strict setbacks, yes.
I think Aurora County has a three-mile setback.
Yes.
Okay, I'll have to look at that one.
I, I don't even know how they distinguish if they've got three categories, A, B, C or, or what, but for their large ones.
Okay.
There was a, there was a big fight over, uh, I think it was a dairy, some number of years ago, as I understand it anyway, and then.
That was the Thompson Brothers.
What was the name?
It was the Thompson Brothers.
Sounds right.
I testified.
Ah, okay. So you could tell the story better than I can, if you were there.
Well, originally in the deal, it showed that they had expansion plans on their map. So then when they came to build that, they said, well, no, we changed the rules between when you did that, so now you can't do that expansion. And they ended up winning, since they did have the dotted outline showing the next building on their original proposal. So, but that took like forever.
There was a big fight, then didn't, didn't the setbacks actually go to a vote?
I think they did.
I think, I think it was a vote that ended up being three miles, which.
That's when they were concerned about the cost of your hogs and all that stuff out there at that time.
Sure. But you can see that it ranges quite a bit. Um, to that Georgia example that I found, it was only five hundred feet. Um, is the setback from the nearest property, so.
So these numbers for Lincoln County, it's a draft, that's not what they are now?
Correct. I, I, I believe that their current one, I should take a look at that. I believe it's more similar to us, to what we have now.
Cause it would be best, actually, I think, if we had the same as they do. Just to make it easy to do business and, and, you know, and if Moody County and McCook County and Lincoln and Minnehaha all were the same, it would make sense kinda, wouldn't it?
It'd make it easier for a producer from out of the state that's just looking in the general region.
And that maybe wanted to locate like where the boneses are, something on the, on the border of the counties or?
The producers we work with, uh, from out of state, which primarily is dairymen usually, they just, this is where they'd love to be, somewhere in Minnehaha County, closer to Sioux Falls is better, cause that's where they fly in and out of. But, or the ones that are coming to move here, live here, the wives wanna be as close to Sioux Falls as possible, if they're gonna be here. But.
Up here?
They don't, not here, surprisingly. But they, they know that under the current setbacks, there's, there isn't an option.
Well, I'd like to get this done before I'm gone. Well, one of the considerations that isn't mentioned on any of the considerations on setbacks, and that's the little thing called protecting existing producers and allowing them to grow within a certain parameter as it currently states. You know, was it, but I think, does it currently state that that's be, you have to have been there before nineteen ninety-eight?
Correct.
Which, I don't know why that's in there.
And I'm gonna get to that.
One, one thing I would add to that quick, if I, if I can, uh, seems on topic. Moody County built something into their zoning that's along the lines of if X number of animal units are coming up within a mile of each other. So you look at all the other animal units of the facilities within, I think it's a mile, might even be a little bit more than that. And if somebody wants to come in and do, say, five thousand head dairy, they take all animal units into consideration within that distance. And, and they can base their decision, at least in part, on that, on whether or not they'll let it go over those animal.
Which is back to density zoning.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so then goes into some more questions. How far should the setbacks be? And, and if there's any other things, we can base those setbacks other than just what others are doing. Uh, and I've done a little bit of research into the South Dakota order footprint tool. Uh, and for the smaller sized CAFOs, this seems to work pretty well. Um, that you can figure out, uh, calculate animal units for how many. Uh, the, what, some, problems with this is that it doesn't translate to animal units, I was gonna say. Is that, uh, it goes by the square footage of area. And unless a, a cow is gonna be in a ninety square feet of area, which is probably about right, but you don't know that from farm to farm or different positions, it might be different. So that's why this would be a little bit different. But you can get a pretty good idea of what a thousand animal units would create for distances in, in the county. Yeah, for this one. Yeah, for this one, uh, and then if you use that odor footprint tool. Uh, Purdue, uh, has published that, uh, using their odor footprint tool, which they're all kind of based off the same, uh, calculations. Uh, between Minnesota, Nebraska's, South Dakota's. Uh, they suggest these things, uh, for setbacks. Uh, that if it's in a rural area, the house, nearest house only needs to be, say, ninety-one percent odor free. Which is sixty-six hours, uh, of smell or odor during a month, is what it calculates to. Uh, is you get more, um, residences than you want to get further away. Uh, and that's something to consider, that ninety-one percent is oftentimes very small, very close to the. And that's just their suggestion of Per- Purdue. But if we wanted to pick something else and say, okay, what's the furthest distance you can get with a thousand animal units? And pick that as our distance, or something like that, you can use some, uh, some science plus generality sort of thing. Um, and then one of our parts of our ordinance currently is in the absence of a waiver. Uh, we've run into this in some cases where our ordinance says that if you have management practices or new technology that's going to reduce smell. You can wa- uh, we can pass over the waiver, we don't need it. And where most of these other places that have those shorter setbacks, those are very firm. You're not going to get a house in the, inside those setbacks. So that's something to consider as well. If we're going to lower our setbacks, or we're going to get rid of this absence of the waiver, or are we going to make specific standards? Which is going to be difficult, because when it comes to animal units, a, a hundred chickens may equal a cow. But the smell that a hundred chickens versus a hundred, or a cow may be different, or how you manage them may be different. Where trees are good for one, trees are not good for another. Uh, you can put a bioreactor on one, you can't on the other, that sort of thing. And it really becomes difficult in trying to figure out what is a true, good management practice, uh, when it comes to this sort of thing. So we'll really have to consider what is worthwhile in reducing setbacks and what is not. Tree buffers, those are some ideas, what can we set back, reduce our setbacks with? Additional considerations, uh, what about very large CAFOs? Right now our, our system's caps at two thousand animal units. But what happens when you get tens of thousands of animal units in one place? I- i- is that something that's going to be equal to two thousand? Are we going to consider kind of a cap, uh, a density zoning of CAFOs, um, as we were discussing there?
Kevin, you said, no, this is just for setbacks, correct?
Yep.
Cause we do have far bigger operations than that in the county.
The largest operation in the county is about six thousand.
Yeah.
Animal units.
More than two thousand.
Yeah. But when you get into tens of thousands, uh, such as what was proposed in Turner County.
Like that big chicken farm or something like that, or?
Yep. Uh, and then other setbacks too, we can consider. Are those significant or are those adequate from what we have now? I didn't go into that right a lot during this PowerPoint. And then other CAFOs, density. Uh, this is an example that was brought to, that actually happened in our county. Um, that all three, these, three of these CAFOs are owned by the same person. All of them are class D CAFOs, so they have the setback regulations and they are permitted without a conditional use permit. If they're combined, it'd be a class C. So, uh, that would be another way to kind of help, help our, our ordinance kind of close up some of those loopholes. Uh, it, wouldn't it be better for our county to have one class C CAFO rather than three within a quarter mile of each other? Uh, they end up, uh, moving this, um, the CAFO number C, or letter C into this property. So that way it's not in the same property. Um, uh, so that, a- and it does the same thing. If we have, uh, one person who wants a thousand animals here and a half a mile down the road is going to put up another thousand animals. Well, wouldn't it be better just combine the two, uh, rather than having many different CAFOs throughout the county?
I know D N R for their permit, if it's same owner, common ownership, then anything within a mile, they count as one.
Okay.
So if they, if they try to play a game, so to speak, of spreading it out under, over different properties. If it's common ownership, they'll consider it one.
Sure.
And they'll still do their, if it hits the thousand animal units, then.
A- a- and I'm sure it also, it's difficult to do common ownership. Again, with this example, not to name names, I hopefully nobody knows who this is. Um, uh, i- it's like the brother-in-law, the son, and the fathers, uh, you know, the, uh. So they're all different ownerships, but they're all operated by the same person.
Common, common ownership.
Yep.
And that's more what they look at, as I understand it. I, you can have three different LLCs, but it's common ownership.
Yep.
Or, or one single operator.
Yep. Uh, and then this is my final slide, some more questions. Uh, can a CAFO get too big in the county? Uh, do we want a sixty thousand animal unit CAFO in the county, or is that too big? Uh, enforcement, this is where I get to the new and existing. The, right now our ordinance has set up that if you're an existing operation before, I think it was a date in May of nineteen ninety-eight. You can expand up to a thousand animal units without a, a conditional use permit. There are some issues with that. One of them is, there's, was no record of what was a CAFO and what wasn't in nineteen ninety-eight. So we're running into, uh, record keeping of trying to figure it out. Right now, we've been using some aerial imagery, but that leaves gaps.
Didn't that also require those, you also, you had to have a nutrient management plan and engineered.
Yep, you still have to have.
That was all the part, it wasn't just so you can do it.
Yep, you have to have basically everything that you would have to have for a conditional use permit. And is there, would there be a simpler way of just, uh, i- if they have to do it all anyway? Of having a permitting system maybe for smaller than a thousand animal units. Uh, and having different tiers, that if you can meet these very strict cate- uh, categories. You can, you can keep, or you can just build one permitted, but you're going to be maintaining it above and beyond the bare minimum standards. And if you want bare minimum standards, then you're going to have to get a conditional use permit and meet set, more s- more setbacks and all that sort of thing. That would be one con- consideration. Or, uh, Nebraska is looking into a matrix system where they have a sheet that says if you can score eighty out of a hundred points. Uh, then you can get permitted. So they said, okay, if you are creating more than three jobs that are CAFO, you get two points. Uh, if you have a tree grove, you get six points. Or, and, and it just goes down the line of all these different things in the list of, of how to get up to that eighty point mark. And then, uh, you can get it.
Do you also have distance and setbacks in that matrix?
Yep. A- a- and some of that distance and setbacks is not as firm either. Uh, it says if you have, uh, one house within a half a mile, you get two points. If you have two houses within a half a mile, you get negative four points. And, and so it plays a little bit, uh, with the matrix, uh, system.
But if that neighbor gave you permission, wouldn't that do away with a negative score?
Sure.
Sure, yep.
I would just add on the matrix thing that, uh, I've been part of a group since the end of last session, working on exactly that. And not just matrix, but just kind of what's the next step for zoning and, you know, trying to get it cleaned up. But nobody, nobody wants to go anywhere near the state taking it over, because we're not, nobody's trying to stomp on local control. But the matrix is one of the key things that came out of that, that's being worked on now to get kind of a draft laid out back in ninety, I think, seven. There was model, model zoning that was put together through a whole lot of collaborative effort. D N R and conservation groups and planners and P and Z directors, so on and so forth. And the plan is to kind of use that same type of process for a matrix now. With the goal being, try to create something like the model zoning was, that could be shared with every county. And if they want to adopt it, then they, they can do so and then use it however they see fit, make the tweaks, set your setbacks in there. So the goal is to try to create a matrix that could be maybe in a sense considered a, a partnership between a county and state. And the state being the D N R side, where there's points in there for the D N R, the environmental type of stuff. Because they can always do more from an environmental standpoint. In, in most cases, uh, it's a matter of figuring out in a matrix, what are those, what does a point system look like and all of those types of details. Uh, and then at the county side, the setbacks get put in there, any other conditions that a county would want to have as part of it? You want to require trees, or do you want to make it optional and, and give potential points, whatever it might be? So just so you're aware, that's being worked on now, and I think.
There's a meeting next week, Wednesday.
Yeah, I was going to say, aren't you guys invited to that?
I was. I volunteer, I volunteered for it, that's why I was invited, so. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm looking forward to seeing where that stand we've come up with so far. So I don't know where it'll go, but I, I can tell you from the state side or, or this group that's been working on it, which involved a lot of producers. And, and also D N R and, and a lot of the association groups. Nobody's looking to have it be a mandated thing, like it is in, say, Iowa or. I, I don't think Nebraska mandated it. They wanted to, and then that, they could tell that was never going to make it through. So it's hopefully going to be something, I don't know that a point system is going to be the key, but it's being worked on. I, I personally think it has a lot of potential, because it can help put some black and white to what's otherwise so much emotion. And, you know, if we get into the, uh, the odor modeling, there's, work is being done now to, to beef up the odor model. To get it upgraded, basically, to look more at some of these larger facilities. That's something we started working on with SDSU.
And right now it only has beef, dairy, and swine. It doesn't have the other animals involved with it, so.
So that's underway. I, I don't know when, I don't know when Aaron will get it done, but.
Are we looking at trying to make these, uh, a little more flexible too? I know that when I went to that dinner, they talked about that well that was, uh, in Grant County and how, uh. You know, when you make it too specific and too hard, that, uh, then we get to be so nitpicky. Like, I know we delayed a CAFO that we approved here. The commission delayed it for a month because it was twenty-one feet too close to the neighbors. Instead of thirteen eighty-five, it was, you know, thirteen sixty-four or whatever. And, uh, yeah. Anyway, are we going to try to write it in a way that allows for some latitude that way as opposed to? Has to be thirteen eighty-five? It's thirteen eighty-four, you can't have it?
Well, that's the way it's set up now. We have criteria. We don't have firm setbacks. That was a misinterpretation on behalf of the county commission.
It was, uh, it was Gene Bender, attorney-at-law, whatever. And we could have had Scott just make them put the building permit twenty-one feet further away. And then the neighbor didn't like that either. Well, the guy that objected had a CAFO of his own, but he rented land from a guy. Who was too far away to object, but was objecting. And, uh, so that's the personal relationship stuff.
So we're, so we're going to start working on some revisions and, um, this was just sort of get your feedback and.
I want it, I'm, I'm.
We'll be bringing something either sometime throughout next winter, January, February, whenever we'll start working on it.
Talk to Lincoln County too, right?
Yeah.
Their numbers didn't seem that bad to me. Although I did see a number here, I was wondering here, looks like ducks are, uh, account for more than sheep. So if I.
Higher manure.
If I have two ducks, it's the same as four sheep.
Yeah, I think Paul's right. I think it's the, the liquid factor.
It makes all the difference. Same with, like the Soundstegard project that was mentioned. I, I, I just went to their Harris facility on Saturday. And, uh, that's second time I've been there. I didn't tour it, I just went and drove around a little bit and got out of there. I just happened to be in the area and. Uh, I, I think you said the setbacks, that's, I think they're up to seven million birds at that facility now, or real close. And I think you said the setbacks, when they were looking here, would have been fifteen miles or.
Thirteen and a half for six million, yeah.
And I can tell you, that particular system, with the way it works, with the manure, the, the drying and how it runs on the belts. And how it's spread out in the buildings they have. The only thing we could smell at all, and we sat there with the windows down, was the smell of the feed mill. That was it, no matter where we sat. And that, that's the second time I've been there, same experience. So I would just argue that thirteen and a half miles isn't necessary.
Yeah, stink does not travel thirteen and a half miles.
Right.
Uh, e- even John Morrell's stink does not travel thirteen and a half miles, yep.
But that's one of the major things we want to look at is, because we know that our, the way that we handle the animal units for chickens is, is antiquated. So we have to, we're going to have to do something to update that, and that's sort of the start of all this. And then I think, uh, David wants to talk about aquaculture, and that's one of the other items that Jeff wanted us to look into.
So is part of the question then, you know, when we look at our setbacks, that. I mean, is there, is there some point when the numbers don't make much difference either?
Right.
Yeah.
You know, because there really is. I mean, at some point you get to the fact that as long as there is, the person has a land base to haul the manure.
Yeah.
I mean, X number of pigs smells the same as X number of pigs.
Well, we ran into that, we ran into that issue with Lynn Boltline out by Baltic. This is getting, he's got big enough where he was bumping into the setbacks of all these municipalities. He just, I mean, even though Baltic is five miles away or six miles away. He was still running into the, the setback for that, and that's what, so we're going to look at that as well.
Really, if you, if you get the, the setbacks correct, the animal units are, don't matter as much.
Right.
Because the animal units matter more for that transition from class to class. But once you get that, that bigger, when you're bigger big, uh, it's not going to make a difference, so, yeah.
The biggest thing is the weather conditions when you're hauling out the manure. That's the biggest thing. That's.
Yeah, and we had, we.
No getting around that.
We, we, we had a couple calls this year on different facilities, other than.
And ours.
Other than ours.
Yours.
We, I mean, we had, we had to send, I think it was David went up to Highland Township, because, you know. Or was it Kevin?
Kevin.
Kevin, sorry. One, you know, all their dumping manure on the ground and they weren't. It's just, that's a little bit of an education, you know, you're, you're having new people that are moving out there that are not familiar with.
Exactly.
With agriculture.
I don't want to live with a big building near me.
Yeah.
I moved into the country, uh, how did my neighbor get dogs? Only I can have dogs.
That's, so part of that's an education, and you're always going to be battling, you're always going to battle that.
Setbacks will never fix that.
You're going to call us.
Yep.
Yep.
And some of those people need to realize that when they move to the country, that the ag people were there long before some of us that came out there. But it was our choice to move there.
They'll be there longer than those.
I totally understand that.
And there'll be dust in the fall.
Exactly. Yeah, I, I hear that all the time.
So the problem isn't the animal units, it's our.
And they say no calls.
Hey, David, tell us about fish.
Well, yeah, I think as Kevin mentioned, this kind of falls under the, the other category in terms of where the state's looking at it. I mean, it's treated on a case by case basis, because there really is no set scale on what, because it's, I mean, what we're dealing with here is, is pounds produced. And that's a completely different thing as, as opposed to how much waste a cow produces. So a lot of, I mean, basically, I mean, what aquaculture comes down to is it's controlled farming of aquatic organisms. Or, you know, in a lot of different cases, they can vary in, in size and scope. And, and you have a lot of different types of fish, um, and the amount of feed that you produce. And there's always technological changes. This is still, I mean, it's a pretty new thing that's, it's starting to. Because in the U S, we, um, we import a lot of our fish. And we don't see a lot of benefits as other countries across overseas, um, in terms of the, the revenue generated from that. I mean, just for, just for an example, um, with where the state's at right now. Because what's produced is a census of aquaculture, just like the agriculture, um, two thousand and. what's produced is a census of aquaculture, just like the agriculture, um, two thousand and five and two thousand and thirteen. The, um, the amount of money that the state produced doubled in that eight-year span, um, which is the same number of farms, which is still like seven fish farms, which, um, is probably most likely geared to get around more of the, like, the Missouri River or waters of the state, um, where you have, like, things like nets in, um, in certain areas or state-managed lands, um, but it'd be interesting to see where, I haven't really found much of that, um, yet. Really, this kinda all started in two thousand and four with EPA, they have the affluent guidelines for these concentrated animal, aquatic animal production facilities, um, which applies to both existing and new, and they, they meet the three criteria, and I, I ha- I got some diagrams from a couple of different places on what these three means, but these are the main three types, basically, they mean what they say, and the diagrams will help clear them up, um, in terms of flow-through, recirculating and net pen systems. The net pen is, are those ones that, basically, it's just a net in the middle of, um, a waterway, um, and everything goes in and it goes straight to the, the water, um, the other ones are more of a controlled process. One of the thing, one of the other criteria is directly discharging water, which is covered in, um, waters of this US and, and all the, um, the Clean Water Act. Um, which is another thing that those guidelines are set up to do, and then the other big thing is that they produce at least a hundred thousand pounds of fish per year, um, which some of the largest facilities, just for an example, in, in Indiana, where I went to school at Ball State in Muncie, there's metropolitan government, so it's, it's city-county, it's a collaboration, um, in, in a smaller town, rural environment. There, there was plans for, this is like ten years ago, for a, a seven million pounds per year facility, they wanted to expand up to that, and and they're going through the things as far as going through all the regulations that existed, and you just have, you have, you have so many different layers, you have the EPA looking at this, you have the FDA, Food and Drug Administration, looking at what goes into feeding those fish, um, because ultimately you're producing a product that people eat, um, in some cases, um. So you have all those different things, and this is just the definition of what that is, there's many different things. I think most of the definition around what the state revolves around is fish hatcheries, um. In a lot of other places, you have more geared towards aquaculture, places like Washington, other places that are geared towards a larger metropolitan environment, a lot of these facilities are located in, like, brownfield areas, so you have abandoned building, or abandoned lands and, and buildings that were um, an old, like, car manufacturer and other things like that, so you're revitalizing and turning these properties into productive landscapes and producing food or, and other quantities, um. And what that breaks it, the definition breaks it down into two categories, you have cold water species and warm water speci- species, um. Just noted on there, um, mainly with the tunas and the salmon, eh, are the most common ones. This flow-through aqua, this diagram, um, that I pulled, basically, I mean, what you have is, you have everything that goes in, you have your system up here that's generated by a computer. Get the laser pointer out, so you have the computer system that operates all the machinery, um, because our technological advances, and then you have everything that goes into the system, these are the tanks themselves, and means what it says, you have everything that goes through the system, um, in terms of, uh, separating out the different microbes and, and other things. Um, and then eventually you have the outflow of water, in this case, um, and certain things that separate out what's existing, so mainly it's just that discharge, so these are the discharge systems. Um, other ones you have, recirculating water, this is kind of a, a little bit more of a complex one where, or I think it's a better diagram because this comes from, uh, Michigan State, they have a, a highly, they've got a lot of research around aquaculture and aquaponics, which is fish farming and vegetable farming at the same time. So basically, you have your, your oxygenation, oxygenation, where you have the fish that's, supply the oxygen to the fish, um, to keep them alive. And, and then the fish produce the bacteria, the basically poop in the, um, and then they produce. And then that goes through filters and then goes through different processes, and then these waste solids end up in some cases actually can be applied, in different cases, applied on fields or different, um. Basically, I was kind of like a, a, um, oh, I can't think of it right now, um. Fertilizer for, for plants and other things, um, thank you, um. And then net pen, what I described before, a net in the water, open water. Exactly what that means, you have fish that can escape, so that's, I mean, one of the things that this, especially I think the state looks at, is fish that get released into waters, rivers and other cases, um. Just going through that, mentioned the two species categories, basically you have ponds, raceways. Basically, like the flow-through aquaculture, um, or other similar structures, uh, tanks. And then, um, the discharge at least thirty days, basically more than a month per year. And they produce less than, doesn't include, ones that include less than twenty thousand pounds per year. And then, um, the other one is that facilities feed less than five thousand pounds during that calendar month of maximum feeding. And this is strictly right from the guidelines themselves, um, and then warm water species, same thing, same kinda, um, facilities, same discharge, at least thirty days per year, does not include closed ponds that would discharge only during the periods of excess runoff, um, mainly during.
What can the water be used for?
What was that?
What can the water be used for?
In the water itself, I mean, I, I haven't really looked at that, um.
Can it be used for irrigation, can it be used for farm animals? Is it irrigation?
Irrigation.
Yeah. Just like the hydroponic, aquaponic system you was talking about, I was in one of those, that's very interesting. They're great growing tilapia, and the water from the tilapia went through the, the hundred and twenty-foot-long greenhouse, which had floating decks of plants. And when the plants got to the end, they shipped them right into Minneapolis to the rest, to restaurants. It was really interesting. Good.
And then that goes into, so warm water produce less than a hundred thousand pounds per year, so there's the two benchmarks really, um, um, really that discharge doesn't come into play until you get over a hundred thousand pounds for the EPA's standpoint. Um, then you have game fishing parks, which mainly deals with licensure of different fish hatcheries, private facilities. Breaks it down into three classifications for aquaculture, you have hatcheries, aquaculture hatchery, fee fishing, um, then pond management, um, which I think mainly in this case, what we'd be concerned with is aquaculture, because a lot of the other things are geared around state-managed lands, um, make an application to them with, um, a lot of different things. I mean, they deal with a lot of the, um, things that are going to be going into the system, things like feed monitoring and all the different aspects of that operation, um, and then another part of that is that they have a fish health inspection, especially for facilities with salmonids, um, because would be, could be fish that you would, um, be selling it to eat. Different things, so DNR, um, just recently went through some of these requirements, um, as far as making an applic- uh, application requirements for new and existing. Uh, you'd have different things, so you have the max daily and average monthly flow from each outfall, where that pipe would discharge, um, you have the number of ponds, so describing the business in detail, what, what exactly there is and documenting everything. Um, you have the name of the receiving water, so you know where that water's coming from and, and what everything is, um, accounted, accounted for, um, same thing, you have the total yearly and max harvested, harvestable weight according to what the facility is producing for each species, um, basic inventory and other things, and it just keeps going into the food that's fed on, onsite, um. The criteria is the same as EPA guidelines, so you, you have the, those two different kinds of, you have warm water and cold water, um, which, warm water you'll see in some of the, um, the ones from around the region that I've gathered as far as ordinances, can be translated into cool water too. Um, which is use warm water or cool water. Moving forward, the, so the secretary, the, um, in some of the regulate, or the rules that I found, the secretary of DNR designates small facilities, um, as the, those concentrated aquatic animal production facilities, according to these different criteria, so you have the location and the quality of the waters of the state, um, the holding, feeding and production capability of the facility. Quantity and nature of pollutants reaching surface waters of the state and, and other relevant factors in those instances, and this produces in defining what exactly is a small facility, as I mentioned, um, facilities could get quite large, um, and can be in separate, different areas. Inspection of these facilities is required prior to, um, subjecting them to the discharge regulations that they have. Um, same thing with the state definition, um, just different wording, um, s- same concept with the, the facilities. Some of the different ordinance examples that, that I went through and, and just trying to find out what's out there in the area. Renville County, Minnesota is actually not too far away, it's located on the Minnesota River, um, classifies it into two different categories. You have permitted uses, reached out to them to, to offer, um, any words of wisdom on when, what they're going through, it's a different system that they're under, because there's a lot of, I think there's a, there's a lot of differences between what the, the DNR in Minnesota and the DNR here in South Dakota have for aquaculture itself, um. And I think there's more, actually more steps in, in, in application requirements than just going through what Minnesota has than what is laid forth and what our state has itself. So this just basically lays it out, like I mentioned, as far as, they separated into twenty thousand pounds for cold water and, and using those benchmarks of what the, the definitions have, um, and anything more than those totals requires a conditional use to be brought back before, um, in their case, would be the board of adjustment, um. Um, bringing that to the planning commission, uh, same thing as far as the MPDES permit, only if, I mean, if that's something that they're doing as far as discharge, then if that's a requirement, then they would need to do that, and that'd be the same thing here. Um, as with any discharge of water, um, and then they go through with performance standards, it's basically line by line goes through those Minnesota rules, um, and other things. Important things like protecting the surface and groundwater in, in, in those areas, which is an important consideration, um, in this case. Except with the ones, uh, and some of them would get into having their own wastewater treatment system, so you're, and this would probably be more along the lines of your larger operations, not necessarily the ones like a hundred thousand. If you're getting up into like seven million, like the one, that's pretty close, that's like the largest facility in the country, um. So, rather large, so it has to have its own ability to do that. Uh, Sherburne County, I mean, I've reached out to them, um, theirs is mainly set up under a conditional use permit process, and I think twenty years ago, and they didn't really know, couldn't give me a straight answer why they weren't around, or the person wasn't around at the time that this was passed. Um, so it's, I mean, it's difficult to tell what, you know, that process is, and it's kinda, it's a little bit different from the one in Renville, so I mean, they're really not that far away from each other, um, so there must be different things under consideration, but that goes through a lot of different things. I mean, things that pretty much are already in the ordinance, uh, you, I mean, you have protection of floodplains and, um, don't have any shorelands. Um, and other things in just meeting those state and federal, getting those permits and applications and making, um, I think one of the things is listening to webinar. Um, that the, the North Central Regional Aquaculture Center, it's out of Iowa State University, and it covers the entire region. Um, is trying to, a lot of, um, and what I'm finding from that particular video, and they produce, they're trying to produce a report on getting what the, the industry is, is hinting at, and there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of reporting redundancy and and what the application requirements are, because you have to hire additional people to, to cover these different aspects. Um, and just filling out the same thing over and over and planks, um, copies to each different agency multiple times and having the same different things come up in the issues, um, whereas I think in this case, I think strictly going at it from the land use side of things and, and making sure that the appropriateness of these facilities is is cited in a way that it's not causing nuisances to surrounding property owners is, is more along the lines of, I think, local control.
Fundamentally inside, David, do they have anything, you know, like I've been to the one up by Oakland Colony, they've got one up, not Oakland. Spring Lake Colony, they, they converted like a chicken house into a tilapia facility, so, but I, there's no setbacks really, other than the five acre thing, that's the size of the site?
So, the five acre, and this is, I've seen this in a couple of different places, that mainly applies to the, the building site. Um, doesn't apply to the actual, um, if they were to have like, say like a fish farm spread out over the land where they have different ponds.
Well, this part of the world fundamentally, so far it's been inside stuff.
Yeah.
I, I think that's all.
A lot of.
So.
At least in the future.
And more local examples, um, I mean, just not too far away, a lot of them are centered around Missouri River and James River. You have conditional use permits for these, um, a lot of different things, uh. Hughes County kinda takes a, a different approach, you have, cuz they have multiple ag districts, um, that you have and separates the same things. And, and actually does, if you go into deeper into the performance standards, it, I mean, it goes into what the, the CAO standards are.
Do they have operations in Hughes County now that are functioning during this?
I can't remember. Seems like they did, but I don't know if they still do, I don't think they do, there was either gonna be one or there was one.
It's normally it's tilapia stuff in this part of the world, it seems like, so.
Shrimp is the next.
Do you have a plan then on what our ordinance would say?
So, and that's what the, the slides that I printed out for you, um, kind of lays out some of those ideas as far as what an ordinance could include as far as coming at a perspective where you're, um, regulating what is, what's not already being regulated and laying, um, or there's additional, so things like you know, the food, the, the health inspections, we don't, I mean, that's not something you get into because there's already people that do that, um. So you have different things like, I don't know if it's necessarily separating it out into two species categories, but finding those thresholds and whether or not they meet that threshold, and if it's under it, then it should just be permitted. I think in a lot of those case studies that I found, do that same thing, where you go through, um, and still having to meet those steps as far as your, you know, the discharge permit from the state entities and, and meeting your affluent guidelines, which really you don't get into that until you're over a certain point, which in those cases, um, I think what, I think what I'm seeing with some of the case studies and trying to see some consistency with that is that that should be treated as a conditional use, where you bring it to the planning commission to decide, is this an okay facility in, in agricultural area for, I don't know, it's probably too big, but three million pounds per year. Um, is that appropriate for what the area is, just like as you were to decide upon a, a class A dairy operation or something like that, like five thousand.
So what we, what I'm thinking we're gonna do is, this will be maybe another subsection of our, of the CAO requirements where, like, if you are producing less than this, it's simply permitted, if you're more than this, you're gonna need a conditional permit, and this is the criteria, this is the information you're gonna have to submit to us for review, and then we'll have a hearing on it. So, that's where I think we're going with this, and that'll all be tied into the CAO, um, amendments that we're bringing forth to you.
Just to give you an idea on the, on the shrimp thing that I mentioned, the facilities they're looking at are, uh, well, they would produce seven million pounds of shrimp a year. Each facility.
Is it cocktail shrimp or big shrimp?
Pretty much cocktail shrimp, they're really good though. But, uh, in, in their facility, if I remember correctly, it's all closed loop, it's just big. I, I think, it's either six hundred, I think it's six hundred foot long buildings for each one of these facilities. But it's all indoor, it's gonna look like a, look like a commercial building, and there's toward their facility and there, there's no smell, I mean, other than the smell of water.
How many buildings do they have then?
This, this is. This, this is just getting ready to get off the ground. So, they've, through the research, they've done all the research. They've gotten, I think, all of the approvals they need. Now, it's just a matter of scaling up. Whether or not it'll be here. But what they've figured out in all of their research and testing and lab work is this six hundred foot long, if I remember the number right, is kind of the ideal size and system is what they've determined.
Okay.
Yeah, this just kind of finishes out what you've already seen as far as, um, a couple of them did get into whether, and it was mainly the Renville one, whether retail sales is a permitted use onsite. Um, and it basically said, if so, what to, to what extent?
So, then you'd have like parking requirements and all that stuff, right?
Yeah.
A minimum of two parking spaces with paved access.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Very helpful.
Thank you, David. That's.
Nice.
That's the type of thing we may see in the future. You never know.
Well, I think we should have it in our ordinance so that we don't react when the application comes.
Like breweries and distilleries?
And hops farms?
Hops, yeah.
The one thing that I've seen in, in all the counties that we've done work in on our site analysis program is the one real thing that's hamstrung any county is, has been no end to graduated setbacks like what it is here. I mean, fifteen miles, thirteen and a half miles for chicken farm that, I mean, you can go in two or one identical to it. You wouldn't, you wouldn't, if I was a half a mile for one, I wouldn't be concerned from what I've seen.
Thirteen and a half, that's just makes the diameter of the circle. So, you know, you're, uh, you're talking about.
Twenty-six mi- it's twenty-six mile.
Twenty-seven miles.
Yeah.
By twenty-seven miles, that's.